Good afternoon. I'm Demirjan. And I'm going to present the work that we have developed during our master studies. Our main goal in establishing this work was reducing the design gap between physical models, processes, especially digital processes, and spatial data. And whilst doing this, we have followed a twofold approach where our first aim was to create algorithms and generative systems that are quite abstract in nature to allow for more freedom and speed through the design process. And the other part of the system is preserving a very explicit connection between our generative systems and the spatial data. And for the trials, we have used data for wind velocity, which was divided into two dimensions of speed and direction. And since our focus was on generating design and generating not a single design but a design method, we created our own data. It's quite arbitrary. We just created imaginary stations for wind values and we started from there. So for the trials, we have used wind data, but in the end it could be data from anything. It could probably be results of spatial analysis as well. And so our imaginary stations were placed on a grid. And to work with, we needed raster data. So we needed data for every point in between the stations. And for that, we used the simplest form that we could find. We went for inverse distance interweighting interpolation by Donald Shepard. It's quite an old system. Since it was very simple, we preferred it. And using IDW, we came up with raster maps for wind speeds. And this is the linear map that we used finally in Maya. And this is a more human legible version of it. And this is our raster data for wind direction from zero to 360. And this is the legible version. And after generating the data, we carried it into Maya, which is an animation software. And it was preferred throughout the whole system. And in Maya, we used XGen, which is a plugin for Maya that is normally used to create hair and animate hair in movies, but we kind of repurposed it with minor tweaks. And we used some MEL expressions to connect the orientation of placeholders to the raster data. And then we connected their affine scale in the local z-axis to the wind speed data to set up our basic system. And then we replaced the placeholders with generated models that have shape-changing rules based on the data. And then we have interpolated. These are the different specimens that we have tried. And the main limitation here is that the geometric topology has to be solid and it shouldn't change, but we can morph the points however we like. And this was quite an intuitive approach. And then we have interpolated between the rules. And so we have created keyframe animations. And this allowed us to create new shapes for any point that we want between the starting and the ending positions. And then we have connected them to our existing system. And this has created a situation where the keyframe of each object was connected to wind speeds and their alignment was connected to the wind direction. And then we have generated an arbitrary elevation model. This is completely made up, but we have used it to try if this system can generate form on these conditions. And this is the rendering of the situation. And it's only began interesting when we started playing with the pivot positions of the original geometry. When we changed the pivot position and orientation, it started to become more visible. The main shape was emergent and it certainly did show characteristics of the underlying data. And the designer could play with parameters to shape it to a certain degree. And this is another rendering of the situation. And what amazed us at this point was that there is not a single parameter here that is random. It's completely taken from the underlying data and parameters are explicit. And then we went on to our second trial. And here, we have moved on from a morphing approach to an IK inverse kinematics. And inverse kinematics is used commonly in animation and visual effects. It's actually based on the creation of conceptual skeletons. And we can replace parts of the skeletons with any geometry that we like. And we can animate the end point of the skeleton and the system can interpolate all the in-between parts. And we have combined this with long exposure photography, the concept of long exposure, where we can create form from the motion of the inverse kinematic system. I'd like to quote Bernard Schumi here. He actually describes something similar for the logic of choreographic movements. Notation ultimately suggests real corridors of space, as if the dancer has been carving space out of a pliable surface or the reverse shaping continuous volumes, as if movement has literally been solidified. And this approach was used before by artists and mainly in context of art. But we didn't want the designer to shape the thing. We want data to shape the whole thing, but I'll come to that later. But these are our initial models based on the wing motion of birds. So here, we can use these inverse kinematics to create form. And the input here, it's very simple. We just need to animate the endpoints. And when we have the system work on it, we can generate extremely complex forms. And this is another example of it. So we can move the whole shape on a curve. And then we can animate the endpoints to come up with different shapes. And these are our first results. And in this case, it's not what we ultimately want to be because we wanted, as I've said before, data to shape the design, not like animate in an ambiguous way. And so in this case, we also wanted additional data. We wanted these shapes to be formed on a terrain. And that's why, and we wanted to work very fast. We didn't survey real terrain. So we went on to create conceptual surfaces by different materials, including plaster and fabric. We just wanted surfaces to have some inner structure, but we wanted to work fast and free. So we came up with a few models to have our algorithms work on. And this is the main one. And we have used cloth and some rugs underneath the clothes. And after attaining tension on the cloth, we covered it in stretch film. And then we poured plaster and bandages on the form. And it was something like this, some kind of testing landscape. And then we used photogrammetry. We shot it from different angles. And it was an off-the-shelf approach, so that was very fast as well. So we took the photos into photo scan software and we came up with a digital landscape where we could test our algorithms further. And when we carried it into Maya, it was like much, it had a nature which is much richer than our initial digital elevation model, which was just interpolated random points. This has some implicit properties of the physical material. And this topography alone has supplied us with a good amount of data. And then our initial test was to just project curves on this and have our system run on the curves. And this generated forms like this. But in this case, the animation is not connected to anything. It's connecting to basically time. So they run the animation in a normal way and then they change their position on the u-coordinates of the curve and generate this form. But coming back again, we want the data to shape it, not curves or user-based input alone at least. So in our third trial, we went on to try Boyd's, which is some type of swarm intelligence put together by Craig Reynolds. And this algorithm was initially created for animating schools of fish and birds. And so it's by nature very simple. There are only three rules and we can change these rules and the results create complex situations. And I'll quote Greg Lin here. He uses in his book, "Animated Form," the metaphor of a frisbee, a dog, and the landscape where the dog has to, if the dog wants to catch the frisbee, he can't run a linear function. He has to follow the frisbee and change his heading accordingly. And we really like this approach. And I'll borrow his terms. We aimed for the designer to throw a frisbee and the data to shape its trajectory. And we didn't want to use a single dog because in AI, it's very difficult to create a dog with intelligence. So we used a swarm actually to solve the situation. And this is one of the results. So here, there is embedded wind data, the topography data of our physical model, and the long exposure of our system running on it. And these are some videos showing the process. So I'll show three variations. The good thing is, we can change the three parameters of the Boyd system and the user can animate them or these parameters can be connected to underlying data as well. And this is another situation with different parameters. And what excited us here was like, the agents are not very intelligent. They are like almost randomly trying to navigate the terrain. But one of the rules forces them to go for the average center of the whole swarm. And for that reason, if one member of the swarm finds a solution, the center is drastically moved, so the rest of the swarm tries to follow. And that allows them to navigate the terrain in a more intelligent way than each member. And this is how we sampled the data. And for the system to work faster, we didn't sample each agent, but we took a sample from their average position center. And we used the data to run the keyframe animation. So the animation is not connected to time, but it's connected to wind speed data. And the direction actually changes their trajectory. And these are another sets of results. And the system, by changing different parameters, creates a huge amount of shapes that we can use for the design process. And then we wanted, if I go back to the beginning, we wanted this system to work on physical models as well because we value the physical modeling part of design. And for this, we used video mapping. And since our photography was quite accurate, we could re-project the results onto the physical model. And this is a video showing the results. So the user can see the results on the surface, albeit a little flat. But it's possible here to see the results, make additional changes, and run the algorithm recursively. And at this point, in the future, we want, instead of video mapping, because it's kind of limited, even documenting is a little problematic. Like we took many video shots of the mapping process, but it never creates the same effect that is in the actual studio. So for future work, we instead want this system to drive additional or subtractive manufacturing processes to both document the process better and to work more intuitively on it. That's all on the study. And thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. So now we will have Rudy Stuffs and Asba Suffer from Singapore Natural University and Istanbul Technology University. The speaker will be Rudy Stuffs. He will talk us about shapes and attributes, if you please.
Thank you. This is a much more theoretical presentation than I held this morning. It relates to shape grammars. And it's really trying to find a way to, for people to adapt shape grammars to their own needs and requirements. So for those people, for those of you who may not know exactly what shape grammars are, this is a very typical, simple example of a shape grammar. There are three, there are two rules actually only. One takes a square and moves the square diagonally. The other one takes an L-shaped and moves it also diagonally. And then there's an initial shape, which is shown in the middle, which is the two L-shapes touching each other. And then you can, starting from that initial shape, you can have a derivation. So for example, you, well, of course, at first, you can only apply rule two because you only have L-shaped, L-shapes. It doesn't matter which one you move, they will overlap. As a result, they will create five squares. So you could take any square, apply rule one. In this case, the center one is taken. It is moved diagonally. As a result, another L shape is created. So we can try rule two again. Move the L shape, move it once more, new squares are formed, et cetera. So this is a typical example, except that it is rather, well, it is simple in the sense that it actually only uses geometry. There are only lines in this. In general, shape grammars often have other information included, let's say labeled points, for example, to guide the rule application process. And there's other examples as well. Here are a few from the literature. So George Steini's introduction to shape and shape grammars relies on line segments and labeled points. Later on, he has a paper in which he introduces numeric weights to define line thicknesses or surface tones if we're working with surfaces. Terry Knight introduces other qualitative aspects of design, for example, color. I'll get back to that. And Steini himself also introduces the notion of descriptions as verbal descriptions of aspects of design. And these, of course, are only the, like, the most, I would, well, most important, but I mean, the most well-known examples. There are many other examples of people who create shape grammars and decide that they need some information that they can't express in this and so expand it with additional types of information. But in order to make the problem understandable, I'm going to use this case study. It's a different shape grammar this time by Steini. It has three rules. And basically, the idea is to take a square and inscribe a smaller square rotated that touches it. So the first rule actually just takes an initial marker, a point, and creates a square. The square is marked also with a point in order to reduce the rotational symmetry. Then there's a second, there's rule two is the one rule that takes, that inscribes a rotated square in it, which can be applied on the original square and then recursively on the smaller square that is most recently defined. And then the last rule is just to take away the marker because the marker is something that isn't part of the design, it's only part of the process. Now, if we take this example and instead we, rather than just having inscribed squares, we want to color these squares alternatively with white and black, then there are already a few different ways to approach this. And the first approach I want to show is inspired by Terry Knight's work on colored grammars. So it uses enumerative colors as attributes. So it basically enumerates two colors. They're called black and white. And they adopt an opaque ranking. So ranking is the notion that she uses to deal with these enumerative colors. Opic just means that whatever color you apply to it will overwrite whatever color is underneath it because it's opaque, you can't see through it. Now, in order to match, so in order to have the rule match, you need to have the same enumerative values or the same color as is there originally. And as such, we have two alternative versions of the second rule. One is a rule that inscribes a white square in a black one and the other one inscribes a black square in a white one, obviously, because, you know, we need to decide which color to inscribe. For the rest of the derivation is quite the same. And so this is one way of getting this alternative infield to work. But in fact, we can use a different way. For example, we could use weights, as Steini suggested. Now, weights are numerical values, so they can go from, for example, zero to one. And in this case, we could assign zero to be white and one to be black. I mean, if you prefer the other way around, it could also be, it depends whether you're considering the background to be white or the background to be black, of course. And the rule here is that with numerical values, matching requires either an equal or a higher value. So if you want to, if you're looking for a black square, black being one, then it has to be black because it has to be at least one. But if you're looking for a white square with a value of zero, then actually any square that would have a value between zero and one would apply. And as a result of that, we not only need one extra rule, but we also have to distinguish the markers between white and black. And we assign the color to the marker the opposite of the color we assign to the square so that even though, if you're looking for a white square, a black square could do because the markers have the opposite color, then the matching wouldn't occur anymore. And so the only thing, as a result, because of the markers having different colors, we at the end also have to have two rules for termination. One that removes a white marker and one removes a black marker. So the conclusion from this is that it's important to know, it's not just about, well, we're using black and white and so we can alternate and that's it. If you really want to implement a shape grammar, you would have to know how you want to treat these colors. Do you want to treat them as weights? Do you want to treat them as enumerative values? Maybe you want to treat them in another way. And that's really what this research is about. So what I would, what I've done is look at how you can generalize this. So even though there are multiple ways of looking at color, how can we generalize? How can we get a uniform description for a behavior of colors, even if the colors are, can be treated differently? So this is, I mean, the outcome, let's, you know, I'll simplify it a little bit. So basically, we've got two values. In this particular case, we just have two colors. And they have, they're defined by enumerative values C and C prime. And so they are singletons because every two colors automatically combine, so there's always only one value. And all we're interested in is what is the behavior under sum? What's the behavior under difference? And what's the behavior under product? And how do they compare? And so those four is really the, let's say, the formal approach to defining this behavior for colors. And so in this particular case with enumerative values, you could draw this little table here. At the top, you have, well, let's say, on the left-hand side, you have the existing color, X, which can be black or white. And at the top, you have the new color that is being added, Y, which can also be black or white. And since we're using an opaque ranking in this particular example, the new color overrides the old one. And so in our table, black and black gives black, black and white gives white, and et cetera. And we can represent this mathematically using this X-Y table with a row and column C and C prime. So our values are the indices into the table. And so when we're adding two colors together, all we have to look is what is the value according to the row and column in the table? And that is the result of addition. For subtraction, we've said that, and for intersection, we've said that, well, it only applies if the color is the same. So of course, if you subtract the same color, you will get nothing. And otherwise, you'll get the original color. And the opposite for intersection, if they're the same, then you keep the color or product. And if they're different, then you won't have nothing because there's nothing in common. Then we can do the same thing for weights. So as I said, you know, we have numerical values and we're looking at everything, it has to be at least the same. So the behavior basically is that when you want to add two weights, you take the maximum. If you want to take the product, you take the minimum. And Steini says that, well, when you take the difference, you should really take the arithmetic difference of the two values. And that's what is expressed there. But is that so? I mean, it's a way of interpretation. While back, I actually, I didn't, you know, I hadn't read Steini's quite well. And I thought that, well, if adding two weights, if adding a smaller weight than the weight you already have doesn't do anything, then why should subtracting a smaller weight have a result? And that's what's shown here at the bottom. So if you add all the way on the left-hand side, So if you add, all the way on the left-hand side, if you subtract the bigger, well, in this case, the weights are expressed as line thicknesses. So if you subtract a line with a thicker thickness from a smaller thickness, then you will get nothing. But if you subtract a smaller thickness, in Steini's case, you would take the arithmetic difference. And in this variant, nothing would happen, because it's a different interpretation. Maybe it has a particular meaning for somebody. Now, what's the result of that? That is interesting to see. So in Steini's case, if you would have a certain thickness, and you would subtract an infinitesimally small distance, and you subtract it, and you add it, and you subtract it, and you add it, because the adding never does anything, because it's so small, the subtracting eventually makes your line thickness empty. And so you alternate between the smallest thickness and nothing. And it goes on like that. And in this case, if you subtract an infinitesimally small thickness, nothing happens. It always, and you add it again, nothing happens. And it's really about, so how could you explain it? Well, if you subtract something infinitesimally small, it's kind of like subtracting zero. So in this case, you're saying, well, it's really zero, so nothing happens. In the other case, it's like you're subtracting something so small, and then after a while, there's nothing left. It's, even though, so the original thickness doesn't play a role. And as I said, I mean, I'm not trying to say that one is better than the other. Don't get me wrong. It's really about, you know, maybe in some situations, one may be more appropriate than the other. And then I looked on, and I said, well, you know, colors, of course. If we go beyond black and white, we might want an RGB space, or maybe we want an HSV space. But for the rest, we could do something similar to weights. So if we add two colors, we just take the maximum of the respective RGB values. And if we subtract, we could use mathematical subtraction, and the minimum, and the product is the minimum. And so this is one way of looking at it. And maybe a different way of looking at this is, well, what if we take colors as paints, and we kind of acknowledge the fact that if you take a darker color and a lighter color, and you mix them, you get something in between? So maybe we should just take the average. And so this is an alternative behavior for colors, where sum is just taking the average. And then why not subtracting might just also be, because it's kind of similar to adding, so it's also average. And then for minimum, we'll just, for product, we'll just keep it at the minimum. And, well, maybe we want to consider colors as a four-dimensional space with transparency, with an alpha value. And as you're aware, well, as you may be aware, for transparency values, if you're working with a foreground and a background, in your foreground has a transparency value, then the background, of course, comes through as one minus that transparency value. But rather than trying to understand foreground and background, basically, the idea was, whatever the background, what if we have two foreground colors, each with their own transparency? How would we combine them? And, well, it doesn't quite contain the result here. I said, well, there's some function called over X-Y, and this is really behavior of over. So if the transparency of the first color is zero, so it is fully transparent, or the second color is fully opaque, then obviously, it's the second color completely. On the other hand, if the second color is fully transparent, then of course, it's just the first color. And if the first color is fully opaque, but the second one is transparent, then of course, the transparency of the first one doesn't play a role. And so it simplifies it a little bit. And otherwise, you've got the whole, the entire formula of trying to define what are the values and the transparency values. And so, once we've done this, and we now understand how we can describe in many different ways what the sum, product, and difference is of two attribute values, then we can actually say, okay, now, if we have some geometry, and I just simplified here with points, and they have some attribute, and the attribute, the behavior of the attribute is really not that important, except that we know how sum, product, and difference are described, then we can come up with this kind of formula. And just to try to explain it a little bit, so if we have two sets of, two shapes, or two sets of points, P and P prime, with two sets of attributes, A and A prime, then, well, basically, we have to distinguish between the points in P that are not in P prime, the points in P prime that are not in P, and then the intersection of it. And each of them, for, of course, P minus P prime, since there's no commonality with P prime, then of course, the attribute will just be A, and et cetera. And then otherwise, the attribute is defined as the sum, the difference, or the product. And then these M and Es are just kind of like, have to do with the fact that, well, you never want to have a point without an attribute. Well, sometimes, you don't want that. And so if P is zero, then the whole thing should be zero, rather than just having an attribute. And M is about the fact that we don't know, it's kind of hard to explain how this thing happens when you have multiple points and multiple points. And so we just say, well, we've got one set of points, and then we keep on adding one at a time, and that's easy to describe. But, you know, if you want the details of it, you can find it in the paper. So really, what this whole presentation is about is that there's no right behavioral specification. If you, this is just about colors, but we can think about a lot of other attributes that could be relevant. And there's really, you know, everybody could come up with their own specification based on the context you're working within, what you want to achieve, et cetera. And I think this should be supported. And so in order to support that, just not, not just theoretically, the work here is basically feeding into a modular implementation of a shape grammar interpreter. So because it's modular, you can actually add new behaviors as little plugins, as little modules that you just throw in there. And then the shape grammar interpreter can deal with this. So it's like, you try to use a shape grammar interpreter, but it only allows for A and B and C, but you want D, then it would be complicated. You would have to redevelop it. So by using this kind of uniform characterization, allows you firstly to specify explicitly how this information should be dealt with. And secondly, being able to translate it into a, into a module that could be added to a shape grammar interpreter. And so if anybody is interested in that part, which is the more practical part, you can always visit www.sortle.org, where the shape grammar interpreter is available. And I'd, you know, always be happy to work with people to expand its, you know, its possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now we will have Ricardo Macedo Gago from Lisbon University. He's going to speak to us about generative biomorphosis. Thank you.
So the title of my research is generative, generative biomorphosis. It's a research in the bio-inspired design field which deals with the generation of human structures. So as I mentioned, this generative biomorphosis is a research in the bio-inspired design field. More precisely, we deals with the generation of human structures by following the, by following the design requirements that characterize the morphological identity of the biological structures. Despite the shape diversity biological structures achieve their ecological performance by morphological currents. It happens because they exist in profit to a common whole. So it reveals that ecological purpose follows a common geometrical pattern in order to allow the interaction and the cooperation between structures. Most of the solutions, most of the solutions developed by the human design strategies do not reflect these qualities. So this research aims to increase the morphological currents between biological and human structures by following the generative design, the generative design process that characterizes the biological structures. So biological structures are perfectly recognizable in the environment regardless of their shapes. They inform us that they have this quality. So it means that the phenomenon of life imposes a kind of signature in their structures and identity. So according to Sasso Wiener, the identity lies in the process. The object only shows the signature. So the identity, so the identity resides in the geometrical pattern of the shapes. But the geometry by itself is not enough to generate identity. It requires an organizational pattern flexible to change in order, in order to allow the shape diversity. So in geometrical terms, the implementation of the biological identity in human structures demands at least three geometrical requirements: a generative design process, growth mechanisms, and a geometrical pattern. So why bio-inspired structures should follow a generative design process? Because biological structures change without compromising their morphological identity. It means that this quality is a static quality. What generates shape diversity is how the geometrical vocabulary is sequenced. What is the rule of growth in the generation process? At the geometrical level, it imposes a structural organization. Growth expands through a central configuration, which is characterized by levels and sublevels of expansion that follows gradient pattern and which generates a force field that highlights the composition centers. About the biological geometry, biological geometry emerged from a reproduction process of element addition that follows a particular configuration. Both follows geometrical and proportional requirements, sorry. So the elements require geometrical qualities, shapes of triangular derivation that reveal local symmetries. Their arrangement in space should follow, or should be made by simple aggregation and should be organized through an expansion pattern. As regards the proportional requirements, the order of magnitude of the elements and shapes should follow the harmonious values of the golden ratio. So to implement this geometrical pattern in human structures, it requires a generative design process able to decode these geometrical qualities into rules. So for that purpose, I use the shape grammars. So the shape generation process is composed by a main grammar that will define the structural base of the shape and supplementary grammars that will reach the first structural base with textures and rudeness and three-dimensional configurations. So as I mentioned before, the main grammar will define the structural base. Its definition requires two, or its definition, it's divided in two phases. In the first phase, I use the ident rules, and they will define the expression pattern of this shape. Its definition requires angle, its definition requires levels and some levels of expression that will control the proportional relations between shapes and the elements. Over the, over the expression levels, a referenceal shape is defined. Its definition requires an expression angle, and the boundaries of this shape should follow concave and convex patterns. The number of the expansion, of the expression levels and the amplitude of the expression angle will influence the shape diversity. In the second phase, the materialization rules will define the structural shape, the structural elements of the shapes. These elements will be defined by using the geometrical principles of the Voronoi diagrams for central configuration. The supplementary grammars are composed by three distinct grammars. The special grammar is one of them. The special rules will transfer the geometrical mesh defined by the main grammar for a curved surface in space. The choice of this curved surface cannot be random. They should follow a central configuration and should reveal concave and convex patterns. For that, with these geometrical qualities, three geometrical surfaces are used. They are the cone, the sphere, and the torus. The rudeness with, with this grammar, the rules of this grammar aims to increase the morphological vibration and dynamism of the shape by adding at the, at the boundaries of the structural elements some regularity. This regularity can be implemented by two, by three distinct ways: by nodes displacement, by curved nodes and curved boundaries. And finally, the texture rules will explore the shape appearance. The geometrical, the geometrical mesh will work as a, as a referenceal base for their definition. Their definition is over, is made over the structural elements and should follow two distant geometrical patterns: ramification pattern and compact pattern. Their definition should also follow a geometrical, a geometrical pattern based on alternated repetition that should be characterized by contrast strategies. The implementation of these patterns should be made at two-dimensional level. The implementation of these patterns should be made at two-dimensional level and when when they are transferred for a curved surface, they should should reveal a two-dimensional configuration that can be obtained by by extrusion. In this slide, I have one example of a shape that that has been generated with the ramification pattern. In this other one, it's a, it's a work that I did for a land art competition and I use also the same ramification pattern. In this example, I use the same geometrical mesh, but using the compact pattern and and I, and I develop two distinct geometries, one by cell extrusion and the other by cells aggregation. This other one is another, is another shape that I generate with the, with the compact pattern and by cells extrusion. And by, and about the conclusions, sorry. The drawing tool is is able to implement the geometrical qualities simultaneously in the structures. It is able to generate shape diversity without compromising the morphological identity and the structural organization imposed by the growth is crucial to generate structures with structural fluidity, element dependency, and devolution balance. The future goals for this research is continue reaching the drawing tool with other geometrical qualities, the exploration of the design tools through a 3D platform, and the development of fabrication process associated to it. So that's all. Thank you. And I apologize for my nervousness.
And so finally, we are going to have from Lisbon University Institute Ricardo Mendes Correa, Elcheira Paio, and Philip Prandau. And the speaker will be Ricardo Correa, who will speak to us about transdisciplinarity, digital change. Thank you very much.
My name is Ricardo Mendes Correa and I'm here to to talk about transdisciplinarity. The title of this paper is Transdisciplinary Digital Change: Science and Architecture. Is about my PhD thesis. Transdisciplinarity is a rather young concept, almost as young as the digital concept with less than 50 years. It was used for, for the first time in 1970, less than 50 years ago, 48, by Jean Piaget at an OECD Congress and also by Eric Yansh and Andrei Lishnerovit. Piaget completed the presentation a year earlier and asked the others to talk about this all new concept of transdisciplinarity. Transdisciplinarity in architecture. Some of the architects with research in transdisciplinarity, the first one is a bit well-known by the Barcelona work. And these are, all of these are architects that work and research in transdisciplinarity. This research proposal outlines a historic perspective of transdisciplinary digital architecture through the work of key personalities, establishing links between them. There are certain key personalities that I have considered for this study. The main proposal is not to make 13 monographic studies about them, but to trace the links between them to help us to to tell this story about transdisciplinarity or this part of the story of transdisciplinarity in architecture. This is what they have done. This is the links of each one of them divided in the decades they work and also they are linked to the universities in space in a geographical map where they have taught. These are the relationships between them. Each one of these arcs represents a relation of being the teacher of, being the student of, being the supervisor of, the advisee. In this particular paper, I'm going to talk about only of three of these key figures. The first one, Stephen Koonz, the second one, Ivan Sutherland, and the third one, Nicholas Negro Ponte. Only the last one is an architect. The first key figure, Stephen Koonz. Koonz isn't one of the most well-known figures in architectural design. He wasn't even an architect, he was a design teacher for a mechanical engineer at MIT. He's one of the most influential scholars in the development of digital architectural design as we know it nowadays. Koonz had important contributions to the introduction of technology culture in architectural design. Some authors in academic research even considered Koonz an essential element to the development of CAD and to computer graphics that are used today in the 21st century. Just a moment to pick some water, I'm sorry. He's well-known as the guy who invented the Koonz patches, which is a mathematical formulation, a technique for representing and manipulate any 3D surfaces in a computer. Originally, you were defined in a non-parametrical way and later were based on polynomials. Each patch was therefore defined by four boundaries, as you can see there, and their intersections and could be manipulated to describe any surface inside. This is the basis of almost all the 3D representation that we use today. The sad sound, okay. Nowadays, digital architecture can be tracked back. This is the original movie about Sketchpad, a man machine graphical interface, was a PhD thesis of Ivan Sutherland in 1963. This is important to architecture because this was the first interactive CAD system. With CAD, started a new disciplinary territory that changed design practices. It's not me that I'm saying this, it's my co-supervisor, so. Project CAD. The name Computer-Aided with a Knife Design was coined to a MIT project that lasted from 1959 to 1967. If Sutherland inventiveness must be highlighted, Sketchpad had the background and used the knowledge of MIT's Project CAD, which meant computer-assisted, sorry, there's a bug here, computer-aided design, of course. The project was based on Koonz's ideas of a design system to be used by architects and other creative designers without the knowledge to write computer code because until then, you only could draw in a computer with machine code. Yes, it was a generative process, some sort of. That idea of an interactive design system was given by Koonz, who with this simple vision helped to change the way architects design. The Project CAD main objective was to produce a design machine. Also considered the investigation of techniques of representation and manipulation of design information. It was a project that included the development of communications between the human and the computer because until then, when you wanted a computer to to make a draw, you have to to make it in code, you have to pass the code to a punch, to a punched card and/or a punch tape and then to the computer. This Project CAD was also the responsible for creating the scientific basis for a series of digital innovations such as interactive graphical communication, 3D computational graphics, and object-oriented programming. All of this. You can hear well because this is live TV in 1951. This was the first computer with graphicals display. It was called Whirlwind and was funded by military funds done with research at MIT. This is the beginning of a computer who could show a picture. Sorry, I didn't know if the sound was going to come up. So this language was called APT, was automatically programming tools and was done to work on that computer that we saw before, not the computer, but the screen. And they could draw through punched cards, make these draws the ones low. And also can make, they could make with that computer a kind of a cam doing to control that milling machine that's over there. So I've talked about Project CAD. Project CAD had two directors, two different visions. One interactive, that man over on the right, that's Stephen Koonz, and this this other man that wanted an automated design with punched cards. Koonz wanted to use a light pen because there was no mouse. Anglebar wasn't invented yet in 1960. This is how it worked, a non-interactive design. Okay, so a typewriter had to put, put the code on that computer, then a person had to see it, then plotted. It was an awful project. This is Stephen Koonz. know that it was possible to draw in a computer. But Koonz went further in spreading the words to creative designers. At original conference for our teachers and researchers in 1966, in the peak of the civil rights movement, he dared to say that in a creative process, the man had the perfect slave and he was referring to the computer. The idea was that the computer make, the computer to make all the repetitive work and while the designer could have more time to the creative work. Besides patches and CAD, Koonz would be vital for a series of technical developments in PhD thesis related to bee splines, to NURBS, rendering 3D animation. Koonz foresaw an interactive medium of architects using a computer to establish a dialogue through a computer design. With this idea of reconfiguration of design, he cast a pioneer digital architect, Nicholas Negro Ponte, as his successor as CAD teacher at MIT. Nicholas Negro Ponte, although being an architect, is mainly considered as one of the people who invented the computer as an interactive media and he transformed a computer into a cutter machine, which is today. But also he had an important part as architectural design researcher and teacher. He was chosen by Koonz as his replacement as CAD teacher in mechanical engineering in 1967 and in 1968, he was teaching CAD to architects. The significance of the intellectual and professional relationship between Koonz and Negro Ponte has important consequences for architecture. At MIT, he establishes the old Architecture Machine Group in 1968 and in 1970, he publishes the book with the same name, Architectural Machine, which completely transforms the ideas of architecture out of the boundaries of pure boar arts architecture. This, some of the Negro Ponte projects, I don't have videos of those. This is Urban Five, early CAD in 1968, completely interactive with a board of buttons. And this is the most extraordinary project because this is a mix of CAD and automat, and artificial intelligence with the mechanical arm and block worlds and gerbils. And the mechanical arm changed the place of the block world to the gerbils as an environment, as a changeable environment. This was in 1970. But the idea of linking architecture, art, and computer science continued with Negro Ponte to the MIT Media Lab that he founded in the vision, almost like an interactive digital version of Boughs. The link of Boughs, it isn't Koonz heritage, but from the visual artist Yori Kerpech that worked at New Boughs with Laszlo Molina. Koonz gave Negro Ponte the chance to work a figure design as a teacher and not only as a researcher. Soon after Negro Ponte's master being concluded, Koonz chooses him as a CAD teacher, an architect. Okay, Koonz went off, Negro Ponte went on. The CAD came from engineering environment to an architectural environment. This is what, this was in 1968. Okay, I'm just running out of time. This research aims to trace evolution of architecture from Boughs to Sketchpad and there to nowadays transdisciplinary digital architecture. there to nowadays transdisciplinary digital architecture, focusing in the relationship in the interaction between people, places and institutions. Building an interactive platform to present a new vision of transdisciplinary digital architecture through the work of key personalities. This is some topics about my methodology. I'm running out of time, so I'm going past it. This is just an example of a short kind of methodology to research the links between all those people. The second stage is a database with universities where all these people, all these key personalities teach, taught, sorry. A second stage of database where the place, the names of him and the periods they taught. And we can animate this in space and in time. It's a bit speedy, but the years are on the top. As you can, could see, most of these people taught in the same places at the same time. They interact together. Discussion and preliminary findings. The scientists Coons and Sutherland reconfigured architectural design through Sketchpad, the first interactive CAD. Coons managed to pass those ideas to Negro Ponte, a teacher of architectural design. So we've got key figures. Coons had the computer aided design concept. Sutherland used that concept to make the first interactive computer aided design software. And then computer aided design concept in architecture with Negro Ponte. The other key figures that I am studying at my PhD thesis, they relate this way. There was a first generation that worked at Bauhaus that communicate to a second generation, that communicate to a third generation, that includes also Christopher Alexander, William Mitchell, Lionel March and Charles Eastman, which is the third generation and the first generation of digital architects. These are the references. Obrigado.
I don't know, does anyone want to speak?
That mechanism already implemented in Sortall GI, all of these weights and parameters and alpha channels already in the module there.
Most of them are, not all. From the ones I presented, the only one that is not present is the colors in RGB space using weights that are kind of boost as an intermediary to get from the one dimensional to the three dimensional. All the others are.
Well, thank you very much. Does anyone else wants to do?
Some years ago, we began just with parametric design, is that in the 90s. Well, we have many discussions about parametric design, not, well, there are many senses about parametricism, but I'm talking about the parametric design as poetic, like Zadid and company. Sorry. Well, this discussion is, I would say, question is why? There is, I think there is a consequence of the last, what you said Ricardo in the last speech. You said that CAD was a very unprofund change in architectural practice. Well, in the, what I said in the beginning is that it was not. It was in the drawing, in the drawing practice and not in architect practice. Well, of course, architect has to draw, not him, but I'd say the complete staff of the architectural office. But that is not the architectural place, the architect is not, the architectural place is not in the drawing. And CAD really didn't bring any development in architectural practice in its real meaning. The narrowness that CAD introduces evolved in the creation of a sort of capacity of production of drawings that have, I would say, no denotational semantics. Well, it's very good in syntax because of formal, it's formal, good in connotation semantics because it has a very developed geometrical semantics, can create shapes, but those shapes has no correspondence to the reality. And to reality is human life, social life and nature. You must, well, those, I'm going to give you an example. I'm a structural engineering at first. I still have classes of structural engineering in our school. I say my peoples that straight lines and surfaces that are, well, they are straight, they are, those are not the rationality as some people say. Structure gives always optimized forms, shapes, it's always curve and complex curves. But they have those curves if they are optimized because they have in their shapes something more than the three dimensions of geographical space. They have other dimensions, for example, movement and energy. If you only work in 3D spaces and geographical spaces and it's what CAD makes and parametric CAD makes, it has no correspondence to reality. You must input their other variables. So I ask, why those parametric forms? You said biomorphic forms. Well, there is a famous sentence from Mies van der Rohe that said he was a very organic architect, only he didn't make buildings with the form of organs. Well, this is the question I would like to ask you. Why, why those forms? What they bring to people?
I have to say something on behalf of my supervisor, which is Daniel Cardoso Llás, which is, he made that statement, not me, about architectural design being changed by CAD and by that 60s CAD, not 80s AutoCAD. Because it was, it was happened in the 60s but was a much developed CAD than the 80s AutoCAD. Some of those guys called the 80s AutoCAD dirty dots because it wasn't so developed as that. There's a paper of William Mitchell about it, I think it's called Roll Over Euclid, that talks about it. And it is not my citation, it is a citation, not my words, but I agree with all that he said because that way of seeking architecture was completely different from nowadays. And in the 60s, they were using already parametric design, they were already using oriented object programming and they were already using topology. AutoCAD had not topology to nowadays. So it's that difference. Can I pass to the morphology or something that you want to explain?
I could have something.
Okay.
Well, I think the main advantage these tools can provide with the architects is mainly heuristics because it's very hard to define architectural problems like engineering because there are many factors involved and even the idea of knowledge, I think, is very problematic to define. So I think the way these systems could be beneficial is to use both digital simulations and the other one is, I think, physical models, especially for that reason. And that's why we focused on like always switching between the digital and the physical, therefore we could evaluate these shapes for different circumstances.
So in my case, I'm using this kind of tools just for one reason. Because biology is a natural thing, that everything, nobody is a phenomenon that use this kind of tools. And if I want to achieve, if I want to achieve ecological goals in my, in my architecture, I need to use the same process that, that nature uses. So it's my point of view for use of this kind of drawing tools. Thank you.
But later, nature has a proposal. They use, for example, the golden ratio. Not because, there is a reason, because there is a development that is numerically uses the, uses the golden ratio. Because other processes that don't have that development, they don't use it. So you must use the golden ratio only when you have that kind of development. Yes, that is right, but why use that golden ratio in every situation?
No, it's not in every situation. It's, 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 if I want to reproduce the qualities of the biological structures, I need to use the values that she use, no? It's so simple like that. So you can point in a different thing. There are two kinds of geometry in biological structures. So you have one kind of geometry that is the identity, everything that you know have this kind of geometrical pattern, no? So you have another second, and you have another second phase on the geometry that it's imposed by a cognitive entity that no one knows. So and this, and this entity works with all the elements of the nature and makes some function and make everything work as a wall. So in my point, I'm just, I'm just working with the first phase of geometry because it's, it's, it's a geometry that's, that is all, it's present in all the, in all the objects that we know. But the other stage, I cannot develop, I cannot develop anything because no one knows this, this cognitive entity, no? So you need lots and lots of research in this, in this field. I don't know if I want to, to you, but I think no for your fans, sorry.
Well, thank you very much. So I think we have time for one last question. If anyone wants to ask anything, if you please.
I have a question for the last Ricardo. If you could explain a bit better the goal of the research. I understand the importance of the relations that you are trying to establish. In a way, I think they are a bit obvious because we connect to each other in common spaces and it's natural that we share experience and that kind of things that you explain happen. But in the end of the, at the end of the research, what is your goal? To put that figures in their right recognition, to bring their work again as a very important work? That final stage of your research, I didn't understood quite well. What were trying to prove with those kind of relations that you are seeking between these figures that obviously have this kind of branch between them? But okay, they have and we all have here, if you want. After this, we all go back to our context and then we can say that one day, during three days, we have this relation. So what's, what's the point in this?
The point is to, there are many studies about historical perspectives of digital architecture, but not as, as much to focusing, to focus on the transdisciplinary digital architecture also, the way that the use of science changed the architecture. And give the tools to work with computer science, with computation, not only with the computer and as frankly I've told about the using the computer, just using for, as a drafting tool, but not just as that, but as the way computation changed the architecture. And that is the, trying to explain in a historical perspective how it was changing from the first using the machine at Bauhaus in teaching in industrial way that wasn't used in design and architecture. And then to, to the new Bowers where they used light to, and came to the animation through light because they haven't, in the 40s, they hadn't the tools that we have today to deal with movement. And then it came to a new perspective that came with the 60s with the old digital change. First, it was a non-interactive digital change, like the case of Christopher Alexander who had to program because he was a mathematician and he had to program the computers, but to make architecture, to make urban planning. And then to relate that with the persons that use interactive architecture, interactive digital architecture, interactive digital architectural drawing. It's like, I want to make this connection and I think that all this connection wasn't made before. But perhaps if anybody can tell me some ways to do other way, but I think that I can establish the link through here. Have answered? No. A bit.
Yes, one last question?
If you consider, well, what you presented today works with numeric values. It's very straightforward in the sense that it's mathematical. It's almost binary operations if it's black and white, a part of there. The only semantics comes when you decide to, should I subtract it or not in a mathematical form or, well, or use the same operations in a different way. Do you think that, that, that structure that you present here today, which is plainly numerical, can be used to convey semantic informations? For instance, during the development, if some layer has a semantic value that over another rule, the application of a rule may be combined with another one and given a specific meaning. Do you think this is feasible?
Do you think this is feasible?
Yes. I mean, I would say yes. I think the reason why... I mean, it's easier doing it with numbers, because taking away the semantics, give it's a broader applicability. So in a way, the point is, I, by envisioning these particular uses numerically, I'm not imposing a particular viewpoint. I'm just saying, look, this is a way you can deal with it. If you want to use it, use it. As soon as you step into the semantics, it becomes obviously much more specific. And I think it's probably much more valuable. The only question then is, okay, why do you do it this way and why not that way? So for example, I think the enumerative colors kind of take a step in that direction in that the way Terry Knight uses it. For example, she talks about two materials, aluminum and wood. And then she specifies in the table what happens when these two materials come together. Now, of course, if whether it is realistic or logical is a different thing. It's an interpretation. But it... I think it does add some semantics to it. But it is limited, of course, because it's just about, you know, you have two elements with some meaning. You put them together and then you say, well, you know, this happens, that happens. I think it would be very powerful and very valuable to dive more into this and see how, you know, other approaches can be embedded into this that are much more meaningful. But I think it would have to come from specific case studies or specific goals or purposes, so that it doesn't really matter that it, you know, it works for you and it might not work for somebody else. It is as valuable, even if it can be, cannot be generalized. But it is... Yeah. It's from my point of view, let's say, where I'm looking more at the overall ability rather than particular use cases, it makes it more difficult.
So very well. So I think we can finish this session. I thank you all very much for your presence here. Thank you very much. We're going to do a short break.